All right, let's call the meeting of the November 13th, 2012, meeting of the Acton School Committee to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
I'll ask for approval of the school committee meetings from October 16th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept the school committee meetings from October 16th. Any discussion? All those in favor? Comments from the public?
Wild crowd out there.
All right then, let's move on to communications and correspondence. Do you have any?
I have no communication and correspondence.
And then we'll move on to staff reports, beginning with the superintendent's report.
This is just an outline of what we're going to talk about very briefly.
Okay.
Sorry. And, Carleen, did we shift the HQ to, yes, we did, under your business?
Yeah.
Good. Just as a reminder, tomorrow evening at 5:30, we have a very fascinating community-based, school-based, student-based meeting to develop a vision and a strategic plan for the Acton School Department. And Mary Jane McCallman, who used to be superintendent in Portland Public Schools and has been retired for a while and doing a consulting business, is going to help facilitate that meeting. We're expecting probably in the neighborhood of 35 people, including school committee members, teachers, students, community members. So we're really looking forward to a good show and a good beginning to get everybody on the same page in terms of what is our vision for Acton Education for the next five years out? And how do we begin to develop a strategic plan so that the community is aware, the tax base is aware, then we're aware of what the priority items are in order to enact that vision? So we're going to begin that process, not going to be done, but we'll begin that process tomorrow evening, and the meeting will be held in the cafeteria. And looking forward to the outcome, and we'll report out on that at the next meeting. As you are aware, No Child Left Behind furnishes Title II and Title I funds to the Acton School Department, and the federal government is conducting an audit review. We had tons of paper documentation that had to be submitted, and I want to thank Tricia and Carleen for their huge initiative in getting that together and getting it up to the main Department of Education in a timely fashion. On November 29th, at 9 o'clock in the morning, there will be telephone reinformation of the projects and the documents that we have submitted. If we pass that audit, then we don't have a site visit, and they will give us an opportunity to submit supporting documents should that in fact occur. At the next school committee meeting in December, we would like to have a special presentation by Strategies for a Stronger Sanford, and a subcommittee of that is called MYAN, Main Youth Initiative. And we had six students, I believe, from grade seven and eight go on the overnight. They were in the accompaniment of Elise Miller, who is a parent of students here, and they will report back to you on what they feel the needs and the strengths of the Acton School and the Acton community are in terms of supporting youngsters as they move into the 21st century. So it should be a very interesting presentation, and they will follow the protocol for student recognition. Later coming up in your packet, you will have a new copy of the Highly Qualified Teacher Policy. That is a subset that's required under NCLB. There's not a lot of change from the way we've always done it, but it's updated wording and sent a more simplified framework in terms of its language and its protocol. The crisis response team and the crisis action teams have met, and we want to thank Mr. Brazier for sharing and Mrs. Bovin for taking notes, and we'll meet again as a full team in December. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, anybody have any questions about any of those things?
Meeting tomorrow night, 6 o'clock till when?
5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
I would say, I would say 7:30 latest.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anything else?
Okay, let's go on to the principals' report, please.
Well, it's been busy. The first item I report is the Kids Out program. This is an offshoot of the YMCA, and it's a before and after-school program now being offered to our community. There are notices that have gone out today to parents that if they're interested in the program, they can contact the school and get further details by getting a folder or a pamphlet of information. Today it was just a postcard mentioning the basic details, and that way we're not passing out pamphlets and massive amounts of papers to people not interested. But it could be a program that is initiated so that parents could drop off their students under supervision 6 o'clock in the morning, and students could be here after school until 6 o'clock at night. We are hoping, especially the after-school program, takes off because it would allow more students to stay after school for activities that we offer here without parents worrying about what to do when the program ends or an activity like Legos or, you know, sports, whatever. It ends at 4 o'clock, and a parent might not be able to come and pick up a child. If they belong to the Kids Out program, they can stay later in the program supervised. So we're pushing that forward, hoping in the next week or two we get enough responses to know when we can actually start the program, perhaps as early as December. So, the PTG fundraiser, Kami Davis headed up the Square One Art fundraiser. Our hallways have been lined with beautiful artwork made by every student in the school, and parents and community members and grandparents have all had an opportunity to order special products with their child or grandchild's artwork on it, whether it be a coffee mug or a mouse pad or a T-shirt.
Is that still going on?
It, I do believe it closed on Friday. I would check with Kami Davis if there's any chance of any late orders, but it's been very popular. As Betsy mentioned, the CRT meeting was held on the 5th of November. One of the things that directly impacts us here at the school right away is we're looking at the plans to change the exits used during a fire drill, the gathering spot of the fire drill, you know, students out at a fire drill, and our next step will be, you know, what if we needed an off-site evacuation? As those plans get drawn up, they will be then sent out to all impacting parties to make sure we've got it thought through. But it was a very, very important and very productive meeting last time to really, really hammer out the safest route for kids, knowing that we're in a situation where the fire department is volunteer, and so during the school day, that is the least likely time that volunteers are actually nearby. So we really had to look at the safety of the kids and out of harms way as opposed to just firefighters coming and rescuing the building. So that was really great. Basketball season has now started here at Acton. We have Nick Erickson, who has returned as the boys' basketball coach, and I'm happy to announce that our teacher Brenna Whitney, who's a fourth-grade teacher this year, has accepted the position of girls' basketball coach. And so they've started their practices. Parent conferences, I gave some data there. Definitely see the higher percentage of attendance and turnout for parents in the lower grades, 93% for K to 2. Teachers reported a lot of parents willing to meet at alternate times, having phone conferences, staying in touch via email. Some parents had, recently had an IEP meeting, so they didn't feel they needed to come four days later for a parent conference. But we do also see that there are more parents at the sixth through eighth grade levels saying that they just didn't feel a conference was needed at that time. It's very rare for a teacher to have zero feedback from the parents. They usually communicate that it's what they want or what, not what they want, or they need a different time. It's very rare that there's no response at all. So I'm still feeling good about that. School newsletter, Pressing Pause. I want to thank Judy. She did submit a paragraph on the school board's behalf. I want to encourage all members of community, if you want to get your word out, to use the Pressing Pause. I've listed the upcoming dates, and so we want to make sure that events and activities are shared with all. The MYAN conference was mentioned there. Elise Miller is a parent of a high school student and a student still here in Acton, so it's great having her onboard that program. Common Core standards. A lot of things happening in education. I'm going to be bothering, if you will, and reminding the school board how much this is going to impact us in the future. Big changes that are really positive for kids coming down the pike with the Common Core standards. A lot of the Acton staff have already taken the initiative to look at their curriculum they're using right now, to look at the Common Core standards, to look at what standards-based learning means to them. They are going off on conferences, they are meeting teachers at other schools, trying to learn what it means to their actual classroom and teaching. And what it really does is it measures the student learning as a separate entity aside from everything else. So it would measure, let's just say, at a lower grade, you decided that writing a complete sentence was an important skill. It measured that, not how many times it took the child to get there, not whether or not their absentee rate is good or not, not whether they needed extra support or be taught at a different level. It measures, did they meet the standard? And when they have, it says, okay, now what? And if they don't, now what? So it really ties in very strongly to what Acton's already been doing with differentiated learning. We need to do more. It also ties in with the RTI and the STAR program, where kids are getting extra doses and alternative styles of instruction based on the child's need. So the standards base, although it will be eventually mandated, and it will eventually impact not only instruction but teacher evaluation, it'll impact report cards eventually. The state is in the process. Some school systems are further along than we are. We're trying to learn from them. We're jumping into the research to try and gain the knowledge, but staff at this time is not being directed to make a sudden change. We're definitely in the investigative and exploratory stage of how we can make this work for us and what we need to do to learn to do better. Just an example, though, I put in my report, Pat Reeves, our explore teacher, works with the lower-grade teachers in a lot of co-teaching situations. She, Pat Reeves and Patty Demaris happen to be, Patty's grade one this year. They were doing a math activity, and both of them were very excited to report to me separate occasions how excited they were to recognize a math strategy applied by these first graders that they had learned last year under Sylvia Emery's guidance in kindergarten because she had gone on her own to investigate other strategies to help kids learn. So it was just wonderful for the next year's teacher to see these kindergarten kids truly understanding something about numbers that had been in the past not understood at that age level, and for them to have retained it, however many months later now, was certainly a credit to Sylvia and an excitement for those teachers. So that's just one of the areas that the teachers here have been looking to make sure that our kids are getting what they need, and I'm encouraging them to continue doing that.
Well, the Common Core standards come into effect when?
Right now, we're looking at...
Spring 2015.
2015.
That's when the smarter balanced assessment will be the assessment in play.
Which means we'll be switching again for the common assessment that we're using.
If all goes according to plan, things could get pushed back.
Right.
According to plan, yes.
Twenty-six, twenty.
Three years.
I thought they pushed it to 2018.
Not that I've heard of it yet.
No.
They went from 14 to 15.
14 to 15, right. It was 14 originally.
That's what I thought.
Right. You know, and I think it's really important to do what we can to help the teachers see that the transition...
It's coming.
Not only is it coming, but it's not as drastic as it sounds at first.
Right.
Most teachers at certain, at each grade level, if they've been teaching that grade level for a little bit, they are already pretty aligned. What might be different is a very specific thing that maybe they've been measuring for an assessment, that you say, okay. One of the things we've talked about in some of the workshops is the have-to-know, the need-to-know, and the want-to-know or nice-to-know. And we want to make sure every teacher at the same grade level, regardless of the school, is measuring the need-to-know, that every kid gets that piece. And so that's where the consistency is really going to be helpful for all teachers. You know, we want the teachers focusing on how to teach the same concept even if the child didn't get it the first way you taught it, and that's really important. But it's not as big a change as, and I think main is an added advantage. Because our, our learning parameters, our parameters for learning are very closely aligned with that common core. So we've been continuously moving in this direction. But I also have been working and talking with other people in the field, even Kevin and I have had a conversation about not making them do work that's already done for them, not making teachers feel like, here we go again, I got to start all over from scratch. That's not true. And what we're trying, what I'm trying to encourage the teachers to do is learn it in small chunks, try something, get a feel for it, so it's not an avalanche, but small steps that we're working towards. And there are, like I said, there are a lot of schools and a lot of school districts throughout the state that have already started on this endeavor sooner, so we can learn from them. And I don't want, I don't want it to be a heavy burden to help kids. I want the teachers to have the curriculum. We as a, as a administration staff and a school board, you know, we'll be directed to make sure we budget correctly for any staff development or change in materials that might be needed. But if we do it in small enough planned steps, again, it won't be a huge...
Impact down.
Yeah, it'll be a gradual, and it should be comfortable.
Yeah. It's like building something with a new toolbox.
Right, right. It's not that you don't know anything in there, but you know...
You know what you're building, but you, now you have to do with a different toolbox.
Right. And the other responsibility will be the three-year grade span. That really is going to be huge. The common planning groups that the teachers are in right now, that they are in, are K-1 and 2. Those are the same three grades that match up with the common core. So you not only have to understand what you're teaching, you do have to understand very well...
Continually.
The continuity, right. Comes before and comes after you. So we've got the 3, 4, 5, you know, and then the 6, 7, 8. So those common planning groups are purposefully aligned with the Common Core standards grouping. So again, that, that comfort of conversation of what did you do last year with the child, or what worked and what didn't, sharing even samples of the, of student work will all come into play with making sure that our standards are aligned, that we're assessing the essential skills, and that when they leave eighth grade, there's a benchmark that we can say, all kids, according to that benchmark, here's where they measure. So it's exciting. I mean, it's, it's not, it's work, but it's exciting work. So that's where the common core is.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Any other questions for Joy?
Just congratulations.
Thank you.
Like, who's this lady, Mrs. ... Now I know, it's Bovin.
Bovin, yes. A lot of the kids have asked me, can they still call me Ms. Halliday? I said, yes, it's okay. They're like, I can't get used to your name. It's all right, I will answer to either. I kind of forget my new name sometimes, too.
I know. Do you answer to it?
Okay, then let's move on to Joy. Thank you, yes.
Okay. So I'm really excited because we're really working very closely, Trish and I, in implementing professional development and having everybody on the same page. So our goal for this year, our department goal, is to work more effectively in the classroom with the special ed teachers, with the regular ed teachers and the special ed students. And in keeping with that, the professional development has been around differentiated instruction and co-teaching and RTI, which all flows together. And my professional development has been around the same things and also common core and how the IEPs need to be aligned, the expectations for special ed students are up here. They need to be in the regular classroom, and that's the direction we're moving in. We do very little pull-out so that kids are getting that exposure. And so it's really exciting for everybody to be on the same page and for the teachers to have in their goals for the year to make that happen. And, you know, we're, we're meeting, so it just really, it's, it's nice. It's very, it's exciting. So that's professional development. I'm also very happy about transportation because I've had some struggles and challenges in providing special transportation for students. So I don't, no, I think it was Ms. Carleen that turned me on to Ted Krzyczek and his van and told me about the possibility. So we called him, and he has been providing transportation with his legal-sized bus, and he is, you know, he has all the insurance. He is, has been very flexible. He's providing transportation for out-of-district students and for a student going to Sanford. He comes and picks up kids after school and takes them home, and also students who haven't had transportation, have transportation issues, who haven't been able to stay for other activities are also utilizing it. So really, that, that has been such a challenge, and I feel so comforted knowing that he's doing it because he's so well-trained, and we have a bus monitor. So that's been great. And thanks to Mike, we have our new projector in our conference room, and we've, we've used it for administrative, administrative meetings, and we'll be using it to project IEPs up on the wall so that we don't cut down a million trees, so, thank you. We haven't started using that yet, but we will by, I'm going to say, in full use by January 1st, and we're kind of piloting now. Also in your packet is the policy for, draft policy for use of physical restraint and seclusion. Looks like this. And along with it are the procedures that we will use to implement that policy. As you know, the rule 33 was adopted by the legislature, I guess, say, this year. So we, we are required by law to have this policy in place and also to have the procedures to go along with it. So we met this evening and had the, would that be considered the first reading, Betsy, in our policy?
This is the first reading.
Tonight. This is, I'm sorry, the first, this is the first reading. See, I, that was why I wanted you to say that.
Yeah, sorry, and this is the first reading.
So this, these policies, I'm assuming, were taken right from the template that the state puts out?
Yes.
So that they're exactly what the law requires.
Right, and it's been reviewed by, you know, the legal experts, so that's why we're...
Government has reviewed it, main school management has reviewed it, the special ed directors have reviewed it, State Principals Association has reviewed it. So did we review it? We're in great company, I guess.
Right.
And the bottom line...
But we had physical restraint before, not the seclusion thing.
This is pretty thorough.
But this is, this is to eliminate...
So it's going to replace, replace the other policy, though?
Yes. Yes.
It was from 1997 when I looked it up.
I know, it's been a while.
There, there may be some revision on the policy to come, not by us but by the state because there, there have been some questions about its restrictiveness.
So do we have your permission to proceed with this and bring it up for a second reading?
Well, we haven't got to that part yet.
Don't we have that in the next...
We haven't got to that yet.
Under your business.
Not the second reading.
No, what I mean is, we haven't got to that part yet.
Well, yeah. We'll, we'll accept it as a first reading, and then we'll bring it back to the next meeting, and that will be accepted and...
Under your business, right?
It'll be adopted at the next meeting, at the second meeting. Okay. Anything else, Joy?
I think that's, I think that's about it. I think I have anything else.
Yeah?
Carleen? That's it. Oh, Carleen, that's right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joy.
You're welcome.
All I've included in for tonight's meeting was just the financial report. I've been very busy working on the NCLB audit material. I've been on the phone quite often with Dennis Kunkas, Tricia's friend.
He's a good guy.
He really is a good guy, and he's been very helpful in sending him all the information. We've actually acquired a notebook about this thick that we've had to send him with policies, procedures, lists.
So all the trees she's saving.
Yeah, we ended up...
But just as an aside, just, you know, it could be worse, talk. Acton receives money through NCLB Title I and NCLB Title II. Okay? Only two. If you were in Sanford, you would be receiving money under Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title V and Title II-D. They submitted over 450 pages of documentation for their compliance.
It's just not right. It's just not right.
You wanted to keep getting the money, you have to prove you're doing what they need to do. This check-in actually has been good for Carleen and I to double-check, and even, you know, with, with some of the other departments, that things are up to date. It's a pain to do, but it's a great checking in...
Check and balance.
Of, of, you know, do we have the most updated information in place? It's just a pain, and poor Carleen has been on the brunt of it.
She's done the almost all.
Fortunately, we were able to upload it to the state, so, and I had to have Mike, took us, what, two days to get the computer compatible with the state's program in order for us to do it. So we had, we had a snow day the day it was due, so I had to make sure I was here, even though Betsy called me at 5:30, 6:00 o'clock in the morning. That was her, like, third phone call. She told me that she had called the, called the Department of Ed and that they were going to give me an extension if I needed it for one day. So, but I was able to get in and get that done.
The hoops for jump through.
Yes. And on a side note, I received an email today from Jan Baylor, and she is offering a Christmas tree to the school again if we are, we are willing to accept it. So I just want to know if you'll make a motion about the tree.
Let's say you call, call it by noon. Go chop down a tree.
Say, absolutely.
Okay.
We can make it into paper.
Afterwards, that.
Kevin, were you going to say something?
No, I'm good.
I just find it funny how the compatibility with the state, it's not like they know what programs and computers we use.
No. Well, in the central office, we do use PCs, so that's different.
That's true.
Mm-hmm. So maybe it was just a Mac-compatible program.
Yeah.
I have been working on the budget for next year. I've got all the budget pages ready to go. Of course, it's going to be a little bit more difficult, filling in some of those figures right now until we get the two contracts settled. So just to think about what you want and what you need me to project ahead of time and whatever, but I've got the three years set up and ready to go. So if anybody wants copies of them, I can email them to you and just to give you, you know, a chance to look at it and think about whether, where you want to see the increases and decreases. I did notice that last year we cut the advertising budget, and we've already over-expended it because of the bidding and things like that. So we hadn't been using it.
Right.
So we cut it last year. This year we may have to increase it again, depending. But that's about it.
You definitely send me electronic.
I will.
Talking about the past three years, historically?
Yes. I flip them so that, you know, we have those spreadsheets.
Yeah.
I move them down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Brazier.
Okay. Just a few items under my regular report tonight, and then I will have a couple additional items under long-term planning. The culvert leading out to the baseball field is complete. The project went very well. It went smoothly, it looks good, and I'm glad it's finished. A couple of things to mention, kind of some kudos for Betsy. Our administrative team met last Thursday, and I personally find it very beneficial for all of us. We all work in the building together every day, but our paths don't always cross, so it does give us a good opportunity to see, you know, what is actually happening amongst the administrative team. And also, I have received a couple of early phone calls from Mrs. St. Sierra in the last month. But, Betsy has done a great job as far as communicating, and we've collaborated well together to make decisions as far as the two events, weather events, that, one was a school closure, and one was a two-hour delay. As Trish mentioned, basketball season is in full swing, and it becomes a very busy time of the year in the building. Pleased with the custodial staff maintaining the building, maintaining the cleanliness. Floor care and disinfection of the building are two goals that I have set for the staff, and we're working towards a good product. And I think that when people do a good job, it's important to recognize them, and I appreciate their efforts. At last month's meeting, Richard had requested some slow-traffic signs, which have been ordered and should be here this week. The athletic fields have been winterized. I've been working on the grounds, pruning quite a few trees, and I'm happy that I didn't have to pick many trees up after the hurricane. So, I guess that's about it under my regular report, and like I mentioned, when we get to the long-term portion of the meeting, I will have some additional information for the committee to consider.
What was the cost of the culvert?
The final cost?
Um, I haven't got the bill yet.
We didn't know what it was gonna be?
Yeah, it's gonna end up coming in right around five thousand dollars.
We had allotted six thousand.
Yeah.
And this other information you have about your garage renovation, is that coming up later?
Yeah, that will be under the long-term.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Amy?
I apologize for the four-thirty calls.
That's no problem, 'cause I think that Betsy woke me up once, and I woke her up once, so, right now, we're even.
Both of you woke me up too, so, once, so, there you go. All right, thank you, Andy, and let's go to Michael.
All right. On, what is it, November seventh, I went to Drummond and, what is it, Drummond and Woodson? I went to a conference up in South Portland. They supplied me this nice little packet with a ton of template policies that we should probably utilize to update our current policies, because I haven't compared our policies to what they have supplied me yet, but we discussed a lot about, or spoken a lot about record retention, which includes email retention, which I don't think we have anything in place specifically for that. I'll have to go and review everything that we currently have in existence. But basically, all of this right here is stuff that I gotta go through and, you know, determine whether the policy needs to be updated to include things such as email retention and archiving, there's copyright compliances. But the big ones are like student and employee computer use, computer rules, privately-owned devices, like laptops that are brought into the school, having a policy or form in place, so, any of our contracted service individuals who have their own laptop, if it gets damaged, we're not held liable, sort of situations. Email confidentiality, a lot of things we discussed was public record, what is public record? So, all of these documents will, I'll need to dig through and compare to what we have and what we need. With that, I'm also working on the technology plan for the next three years. It's required for E-Rate, which I just got a notification today, and just filled out the first form, that the window for E-Rate's gonna open in December, so, I get to start that process. Infinite Campus, I still need to build and import the assessment data piece for Infinite Campus, so we can start gathering, you know, DIBELS and NWA scores in Infinite Campus. And I'm also interested in testing the parent portal, so maybe if we can get things going, 'cause we're pretty comfortable with it. So, potentially, next year, we can open the door for parents to step in and, you know, keep up with their children, maybe even this year, if I can get a couple Guinea pigs out there to test it for me. Website upgrades, we purchased the domain ActonSchool.org, so we can get rid of the Acton.K12.me.us email address, and just have ActonSchool.org. But I'm also looking at redesigning the website a bit, making it more appealing, more easier to navigate through, which will include the Kids' Corner. I don't know if you guys know about this, but we have a little link on the website called Kids' Corner that teachers use daily. In it are over a thousand online educational resources, from, you know, educational gains to research, to whatever you need. But it needs a little cleanup, 'cause it's getting messy with all these links. So, I've been working with Gail, and we've been trying to test different layouts and different systems. So, that's still an ongoing process. Hopefully, have a solidified design for next year, because I intend to roll out the ActonSchool.org email over the summertime, and also, with that, maybe push the new website out as well. So, if you have people sending you emails to the Acton.K12.me.us address, it will still get to you if we're using ActonSchool.org. Alert Now and emergency procedures, Ryan Pease has been working hard trying to update our contact information for parents and guardians, so, when we do have an alert message, their phones will ring, the right, the right numbers will ring. So, she's been working hard and being very diligent on having consistent data on the system. I just worked with Alert Now today to fix our data pool. It wasn't working. It was calling Linda Keon still, and it wasn't calling Betsy. So, I've cleaned, we fixed that, we cleaned it up.
So, do I have a message waiting for me at home?
No.
Okay.
But, so, that's taken care of. Google Apps for students, I mentioned that last month that Ms. Scully was interested in using Google Apps for editing purposes, and she's been very successful with the students using the tool. They use it for paperless peer editing and teacher editing. And surprising to know, Google Apps is FERPA-compliant, so, that was something else we discussed at that meeting. And working with Joy, we're looking to buy iPads, but waiting till after the holiday season, because right now, they're at the peak price. We're still trying to decide whether we're gonna get the little ones that they just came out with, or we're gonna go with the bigger-sized ones, the older version of the bigger-sized ones, trying to get the most for our money.
Using the local entitlement.
Right.
That's very funny.
So, that is that, I believe.
Anybody got any questions for Mike?
Mike tires me out.
Mike, sometimes it just gives me a headache.
I'm glad I can give you guys.
It's just too much.
Meeting for the policy stuff.
Well, we're gonna sit down on the policies. We're planning on sitting down on the thirteenth to go over the couple big ones at first, and we'll start trickling in the other ones slowly over time. But I think the big ones...
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, the big ones, I think, would be probably email and computer use and rules for both faculty and students.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. And I'll entertain a motion to accept all staff reports. So moved.
Seconded.
They're moved and seconded, and we accept all staff reports as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, Policy Committee?
I am proud to present a set of the job descriptions that we approved tonight. Let's move.
Sorry. You've got them already?
I gave one to Carlene to mail to...
Dr. Richard.
But basically, I just wanna make a clarifying point. What we have been doing is going through job descriptions for virtually every component in the school district. We have finalized the version for custodian, bookkeeper secretary, ed tech two, ed tech three. That's all we did, and the school secretary. So, those are now complete. The Policy Committee has reviewed them. This is not something that you accept as policy. It's basic documentation of what people are doing. Our requirement under collective bargaining is that we provide these job descriptions to members of the collective bargaining units within thirty days. It isn't subject to collective bargaining. It's just giving the members of the union...
Did you give it to them already?
I met with them. We reviewed them. I incorporated some typos that they had found and clarified some aspects of it.
So, there's been no big changes?
No big changes. No, they're very happy with it, and I think we did well tonight to get through this.
I like that they're standardized and...
Formatted.
Nice and neat, and if you're trying to hire, you can actually hand it out and...
And, and as I said, this is documentation adopted as of eleven thirteen. If Andy has a custodial position that opens up January twenty-second, there, we may re-look at this job description and say, oh, we really want this person to be able to do this. And it's permissible for us to amend the job description and then give it to the union membership. So, these are the ones that have passed muster, and it's just for you to receive.
Thank you.
Okay. And as Michael mentioned, the December thirteenth, we're going to meet as a Policy Subcommittee and review the, all of the electronic implications for policies in our school district. So, that's what I have in terms of policy, so far.
Long-term planning committee? We don't have to do anything with these, then?
No.
Just give the statement. Long-term planning.
Okay, I have a couple of items for you to consider this evening. The first one is, I'm going to make a recommendation on the contractor to complete the work necessary on the old garage out back. We received three bids. The first bid was from Affordable Industries from Stratford, New Hampshire. Their bid came in at eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. The second proposal is from Patentee General Contractors from Rochester, New Hampshire. Their bid came in at eight thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. And then the third bid is from Patrick Stevens in Acton. His bid came in at seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I'm going to recommend awarding the bid to Pat Stevens for a couple of reasons. He provided us with services when we installed the generator, did a good job. He has got a great reputation. He also assisted me in doing some of the preliminary evaluation of the building in two thousand and nine, and I wouldn't be recommending him to the committee if I wasn't certain that we would be pleased with the result. So, I'll recommend to the committee that we hire Pat Stevens to do the work.
Now, what we found out is, we never voted to put money into this. We discussed it, but we never voted on any monies.
So, you wanna do an appropriation and a recommendation in the same motion? Sure.
What I would like to do is, the bid came in at seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I would like to set aside ten thousand dollars for the project in its entirety, because once Pat gets the building secured on the slab, I wanna install new doors and windows in the building, and I also wanna reshingle the roof, and that is something that I would do myself. The twenty-five hundred dollars would be to cover any additional materials needed to complete the building. So, I guess the motion would be for ten thousand, to set aside ten thousand dollars, and out of that ten thousand dollars, award the necessary work to Pat Stevens, based upon his bid.
Okay, so, somebody wanna make that into a formal motion?
Quick question. Are there other requests? Should we hear all the requests and sort of know what we've got on the plate? Does that, do you do one by one, or one or...
I think that's the only one that we have as far as, that has anything to do with money.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the bid for seventy-five hundred, but to put aside ten thousand in order to finish the building.
Good motion.
Now, what is, I'll second that, or whatever, but what is he gonna do for the seventy-five hundred? Now, what is that, with the cement slab?
The, I'll read the scope of the work outlined in the proposal. The scope of the work is to move the building, which is twenty by twenty-four, prep the land for a monolithic slab, which is a floating slab. A monolithic slab will be poured, one row of concrete blocks will be installed, slab will be twelve inches by sixteen inches on the edges, and six inches in the middle, with two bands of number four rebar and concrete wire for reinforcement. Concrete blocks will be cord and pinned to slab, anchor bolts will be installed, and approximately every four feet, a two-by-six pressure-treated sill plate will be installed. Contractable lower garage and entry door, we're using both. Building will be placed onto slab and secured to plate. Job site will be left neat and clean. So, basically, what he's doing is, he's lifting the building...
Yep.
Preparing the earth for the slab, installing the slab, putting a row of concrete blocks on top of the slab to get the building up off the ground, and then setting the building back on the blocks and securing it to the blocks.
And then we'll have to finish the rest of the story.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing needed to be taken care of. I just wondered what he was gonna do.
And Mary, did you mean to intend, intend to mean in your, your motion to award the bid to Pat Stevens?
Yeah.
'Cause I don't think that was mentioned, was it?
Yes, it was.
It was, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, it's been moved and seconded by, moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, that we set aside the amount of ten thousand dollars from the undesigned funds, correct? Is that where I have some from? For the garage renovation, let the bid be awarded to Patrick Stevens for seventy-five hundred, and that the additional funds, the additional twenty-five hundred will be used to complete the building, including roof doors and windows.
Can it be done for that, there's the twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor? So moved.
And then the second and last item I have for the committee to consider tonight is, Susan Onion and myself have had an ongoing discussion about the replacement of the library chairs. The library chairs for the last couple of years have been one of the summer maintenance requests that I've gotten consistently. The chairs have been glued and screwed back together many times, and they're getting to the point where replacement is going to have to be considered to ensure the safety of students. I had originally gone out and gotten some prices on some different chairs, and forwarded those options to Susan. She also went out and looked at what was, what was, I guess, fitting for the library atmosphere. She also went out and looked at what was, what was, I guess, fitting for the library atmosphere. She also got some information on pricing. And I guess what I'm looking for from the committee tonight is how we want to fund the replacement of the chairs, if we want to take it out of capital improvement, or if we want to look at the library, building it into the budget for the library in the ensuing year.
I think it has to be a library budgeted item. I don't think it has to be capital.
Neither. I think it can be put in the budget.
Put in the budget kind of library?
Yeah, we don't want to use up all that money, I don't know what the cost would be, but capital improvement is.
I think that we're going to be looking at approximately three thousand dollars. But either way, however we get from point A to point B, I just, you know, want the committee to be aware that, you know, somewhere in the, in the budgeting process, if that's how we want to pursue this, that, you know, it really, from a safety standpoint, it really needs to be addressed.
Susan also spoke with me about it. We talked about, you know, these, these wooden chairs are twenty-two years old and, but the, the wood looks good with the whole packet, the throw-in plastic chairs.
Statistically pleasing.
Yeah, a, a, and, and for the most part, although you've had to do some work on them recently. You know, they've held up considering number of bodies that have utilized them. The conference room is also facing some very sad chairs. So it may be one of those things that we start having that discussion at budget time.
Strategic planning.
Yeah, and, and look at, you know, how many things need to be replaced this year and how many, you know, the following year, so that, like you've done with the carpets, Andy.
Yeah.
We're not trying to fix them all at once, but, you know, plan.
A few a year.
Yeah, that we, that we can do this.
The computer does, they're starting to get, they can be replaced.
You know, so, so I do think that has to be a discussion. You know, when I ask the teachers to look at, you know, what equipment do they need, to ask one classroom teacher to hold this in their budget as if this were part of their paper and pen supply would be absurd. We really need to look at it, you know, from the whole school perspective. What else has done its time, served its purpose, and we need to then?
Like the use of the chairs right now is outside the scope of the library.
Right.
Budgetary.
Absolutely. It would be a, a, an exceptional budget request that, again, you would not do on a yearly basis. You wouldn't expect new chairs every year, like, you know, a stapler may break and you replace, replace that.
And if we buy library chairs, conference room chairs, buy them in bulk, we'd probably get a better price cut for chair too.
But, I mean, Susan Onion did a great job as far as doing some research on what was, you know, appropriate for the setting. Got some good information together. And I guess if nothing else, if it's not going to come out of the, the capital enhancement money that, you know, the school committee, you know, should be expecting that this discussion will come up during the budget process. And I, I agree with Tricia that, you know, there is a bigger picture here that we're going to have to look at. And it is a, a very good idea to look at potentially, you know, incrementally, the stuff is going to, you know, the life expectancy does have an end.
No, but we have to look at it like the carpet replacement.
Absolutely.
It's definitely a budgetable item. It's not, I don't think, you know, capital improvement, like we were talking, like we want to seal the, the driveway. That could cost ten thousand dollars. That's a capital improvement.
These are capital purchases.
Right.
But, but Mary and, Mary and I also had a, had a good discussion tonight as far as looking at some of these larger projects that are going to be coming our way and, you know, what I'd like to do in the next year. Where are we going to be going after that?
That's the whole function and the strategic.
Right, I know, and that's tomorrow night.
You know, we, we kind of bounce a lot of ideas back and forth, but we're, we're also looking at, you know, getting the information from what we're going to start tomorrow evening, and then building off that, and then looking, you know, not only just next year, but.
But safety is our number one concern. Like, when you, if anybody saw the culvert that they took out and replaced, the culvert was falling apart. And we did it before it collapsed. I mean, that's what we have to do. We have to, you know, like, even before someone really hurts themselves on the concrete that's breaking up. I mean, we don't want people hurting themselves, so we want to fix that. So there are things that are pending, I'd say, and then things that you could put off, so. Like window treatments you could put off if you have to.
Where are we in regards to, this is my own newness, ignorance of past events coming in. But with decisions like this, I mean, for me, it's an utterly reasonable request to want good chairs for kids. I want them to be comfortable when they're reading. I like reading. What information, but I like making informed decisions. So what information do we have in the sense, I know it'll be part of the strategic planning, but at this stage of the game, what information do we have in regards to needs and assessment of, you know, thing, so that we can make decisions in comparison to others? Like, I think this is a good, I think it makes sense, but in relation to what? If there's a hole in the ceiling somewhere and people getting rained on, what could you have in class?
Well, I think that there's long-term planning and then there's emergency planning.
Yeah.
I think both have to be incorporated in, into the long-term strategic plan. There was a plan that was developed a number of years ago between the town side, the school side, the fire station, you were talking about that. We need to find that.
Who's that list, do you know?
I mean, I, I have, I have, from the school side of things, I have the.
Original.
The ori, I guess the original ten-year plan that was drafted in, I believe, two thousand.
Was that far away? Wow.
I think the other ones in the central office.
We do not have an umbrella plan that I think is what you're asking. I might have things from my department, and Andy has pieces, and now Joy's new to her department, so she might have things.
Yeah, so we don't have like an audit of where we, where the current state of things is at this time.
Not, not whole, not whole department, we don't.
There was a master plan.
Yeah, I mean, I have got, I've got the book, the list that was developed in two thousand.
Right.
And I've got that list, and I've got the number of things on that list that have been completed. There are still a couple of items not completed. Some of those items that were not completed were due to budgetary issues.
But this would be something that wouldn't be on it, like, like chairs for the library?
No.
So that's what my question is, are there other things like that?
As things fall apart, you see, that's the thing. It's like what, it's mostly asking the maintenance. Maintenance goes around to everybody, and whoever complains the loudest probably gets what they need. I don't know. But then, you know, you're also looking at, what are things like in your own home that would start to deteriorate that you should be, replace before it goes so bad that you're expending so much money? You know, and that's, you know, maybe a five-year out.
Maybe that's something we need to do.
But that's my question, it's like, what information is there so that we can? Like, for me right now, I'm, I'm like, do, do we want to spend money on chairs? I have no information from, if, if that's even a good decision.
Well, I think if you.
By itself, it makes sense, but not in relation, we have finite funds and we have things.
You start with the old plan, and you think about consulting with the expert.
No.
Oh, boy.
You're the expert, you got the.
Do we want to put a cover over the generator at some point? Wasn't that on some list?
And so we're going to sense it in.
So we don't have that. An entire plan. That's why we're doing the vision. We don't.
Shell on it is actually considered the cover.
So will we have some, and I know the strategic planning, but will the strategic, strategic planning be at a place when budget time comes along? So we have some of this information.
We will, because, if I can jump in.
Again, this is my ignorance, so I apologize.
Well, I think it's a great question, because, you know, we have had a lot of transition in the last few, three, four, or five years. And so we have each been holding up our end, but nobody has had all the ends connected all the time, so.
That thirty-thousand-foot view.
Right, that's what we've been missing, and we know this. But given our situation, we've all done the best we could. So the start of the vision and then the strategic plan will give us that view. But during this budget process, we are going to continue to rely on that we meet once.
For this year.
You know, and, and speak to each other in those meetings that Andy was talking about. Knowing that the long-term plan is coming.
But I think too, like, I'm, if I'm trying, I'm trying to read into what you're trying to say is, I've had the same concerns along the way with the strategic planning. Because the strategic planning looks great, but what if the, the community, if you don't have the full community's support of your budget, how do you carry out the strategic plan if you don't have the funds to do it?
Which is what happened. It kind of collapsed.
I'm generating all of.
You're working in the abstract.
Yes, I'm working.
Making a lot of assumptions.
I generate these questions, and it's like, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself until we meet to get through.
One of the things that we should be able to look at tomorrow, as early as tomorrow night, is who is your community, who are your community representatives? Who is showing up from the community of Acton at the vision and strategic planning meeting? Are those the people that can impact budget decisions? I went through this a number of years ago in another district very close by. And I was very cautious and apprehensive that we were going to get people on that vision and strategic plan that could influence decision-making beyond the scope of the board, but to get the community on board. And what we found out is that when we brought in people who worked at General Dynamics, when we brought in people from Pratt and Whitney, when we brought in people from the fire department, the police department, from Health and Human Services, those people made a difference in what the school committee and what the administrators brought forward, and they supported the strategic plan. And I have to tell you, when that strategic plan was done, and that plan went to the budget committee in Sanford.
It's bottom-up marketing.
Passed in our, because you had buy-in. And you had accurate, valid information. I mean, I might want, you know, A, B, C, D, and if the expert in the field says you need F, G, H, I, guess what? I'm going with F, G, H, I. But I won't know unless I engage those people in the dialogue. We bring them in, they look at the programs, they look at our situation, and they have a realistic view about what the tax base is in the community of Acton.
Well, like tomorrow night's meeting, is that hosted somewhere? Is that out there?
People, people submitted names. This is the, this is the first planning committee meeting. And in-house committee suggested community names, student names. Those people have all been invited. We're expecting about thirty-five people tomorrow night just to become acquainted with visioning and long-term processing.
Then it's going to open up to the general public at one point.
There'll be subcommittees that will, that will involve.
I mean, we do, we do plan, you know, with the long-term planning committee is to come eventually with a list.
No, but that's my question, so with something like, I don't have a list in front of me, so I don't know, I can't make, say yes or no.
It's more than just stuff.
I'm playing duck to the duck.
It's also, this kind of a plan also, I mean, it does incorporate the, the physical needs of, of the building. But it also goes on to educational programs and the overall structure of what our school department's doing, so it covers a lot more. And the people were, when, when Mary Jane had the first couple of meetings that, when we met with her, she was trying to get a real cross-section of town. So the people that were contacted were people like, well, there were, of course, parents, but there were businessmen in the community. There were elected town officials. There were people from the, somebody from the church, somebody from the senior citizens, kind of to get a total, what other groups? There were, there were lots of them anyway. It was a, it was a, to get a very wide, along with teacher leaders and staff here and PTG input and so forth. So it's, and students. So it's, the, the committee itself is designed to cover a wide variety of people and that can go back out into the community and can help with whatever.
It should help us make budget decisions, not just about the physical plant, which is very important, but also programs, staff development, and, you know, what we need to invest in technology-wise. So it's, it's, it's more, yeah, it really is. And we have not had that in a long time.
So, as for your actual, I think, question about our needs list? Andy's done this to me so many times. Here's a little. I, what I, I think what we could do is take that old list, check off what we've done, see what's left.
Yep.
Prioritize what that is, and maybe go to the staff and maybe give them a little, you know, poll and ask them what they need.
What time's coming up, let's get the.
What, what they're looking for, and we can, you know, get all that data together.
And we do that, we do that, but even so, that's not going to get them, the, the big picture. There's still the discussion of program. There's still the discussion of staff development. So this is really important that, we, we don't have all that in one place right now. I, my needs list would look very different than Andy's needs list, you know, and we have to then have those lists all in one place to then say, okay, is the five thousand dollars worth, you know, a support person for after-school? Or is that five thousand dollars worth an item, an item, because we need this thing? You know, constantly have to have that conversation. And what's really important about the cross-collection of people is it's not just somebody who's sitting at a certain desk in a certain office making that decision. We've got the process, although, you know, we have to do what we can for this year, the process should lead us to running the, the department in a direction that the town does support. So it's not, you know, what did Tricia see, or, you know, what did Joy see just from their pointed, point of view? But rather, are we in acting what the townspeople want for their school department?
And also best, and also based on the best educational research and resources we can find.
Kind of like what the community truly values.
Yeah.
In a nutshell.
So it's, it sounds like, my main question is, I want to make an informed decision. And whatever information is available, I'd like to have to make a decision. So if there are historical documents, it'd be great to have those.
And in all honesty, Kevin, from my experience with this, the first year's messy, because you're, you're dancing to the tune of two different drummers. You've got, you won't have a complete strategic plan.
The plane you're flying now and the plane you're building in the warehouse.
You got it, exactly.
And hopefully we can not fly that plane before it's done. So in regards to the chairs, I guess, I mean, I don't know where we are with that, but it sounds like we're recommending to have it during, talk about during budget time.
Yes.
But is it possible to, because for me, again, I don't know the district definition of what counts as capital improvement or things like that, but it sounds, it would seem to me that it might be a shared cost, and you can't do that, for example, if.
I think it would have to go under a different, a different category, because that capital enhancement that we have in right now for the capital improvement is lauded for certain things.
Yeah, and I don't understand that too.
That was a handbook to eye that I'd love to go over with you. It's about eighteen digits long.
But it's something like chairs.
All right, but what category? Is it under maintenance or is it un, because it's kind of.
It is, it is not for improvement, but we would have to, right. But another thing I'd like to see too, before they just decide, okay, we need to replace these chairs, are we teaching the same way? I mean, these were necessary with these type of tables when they first built this room.
We're going to go to beanbag so that kids are getting.
Yeah, no, well, I'm just thinking, do they, they teach different now. They're using the overhead projector from the library. There's ergonomics to worry, you know, think about, they're using their laptops. These actually where we're going. So before we invest in a lot of money.
Well, it's not just the library, it's a conference room, like we're meeting tonight, so we have to.
And it's all classrooms. With all the technology, they didn't have that when those classrooms were built. So we want to make sure that we're making the decisions that way as well.
Informed decisions based on.
Very good point.
Is there any danger involved right now? I mean, I mean, I'm feeling okay on this chair, but obviously the safety comes into.
Well, he turned over quite a few of them for me to see.
I know.
And there's a lot of cracks. I'm just waiting to fall through.
And I think there's fewer here right now than there was originally. I think, are we down a few?
Yeah, a couple maybe.
I mean, I think against the point where it's dangerous, then I, I think I don't want to shell it.
I know, he keeps fixing up. He's gluing and screwing.
I don't want to give it short-trip because I think it's.
Bring your own pillow to the next school meeting, you're all going to sit on the morning. So I do think, I do think it's on, now it has to be on our budget, and we have to find a place where it needs to be, and we have to discuss what other.
But, you know, if we bring it up now too, we may discover in three months when we're still talking about budget, because it takes a while. We may throw the new chairs right out the window, but right now, our recommendation is new chairs for the library. Where to put it, I thought library, it was a library expense. I'm thinking of the book fair brought in money. Does all she do, do is, is all she do? I can't even speak. Does she buy books with that, the book money? I don't know what she does with the book fair money.
She does a lot of things with the book fair money. She brings in authors. She's helped pay for different types of programs like that. They've helped fund some of the, the art performances that they've done, like the drummers.
And my other thing is the PTG. They're supposed to raise money for the school, for the wants. I mean, I know when I was on the PTG, we asked every teacher, what do, what do you need? I need a projector. Oh, we'll buy a projector. You know, we did whatever they wanted because we had the money. We, that's why we're raising money to be able to.
But now it's going to be an informed decision. It's no longer going to be an I-want.
First come, first served.
Can't be that way.
No.
And, and chairs would not be a want. PTG should be helping to support things that the budget can't as a want. But chairs would be a need. That's not a luxury that the.
What I was thinking, and I was, how they did the town hall, and, you know, they got people to. to donate a chair, you know? I paid money, and my name is on a chair. You know, I was just thinking that, too. They could, they could run something like that.
To be continued.
But it's a reasonable request. I think it's more than a reasonable request.
Let's, uh.
I think we've done the chairs.
Let's continue this conversation next meeting, after we've had our first strategic planning meeting.
Was there a third one? I thought there was a third one.
That's it.
Okay.
You get the lamb.
Are you done, finally?
Sorry. Thank you, thank you very much. Sorry for the can of worms. No, it's my fault.
Okay, new business. We've already taken care of number 8-1. You've done your first reading of JKAA. Yes. Okay, let me talk very, very briefly. JKAA and AR. Yeah. Remember about an hour ago, we talked about NCLB audit? Yes. One of the things that came out of the NCLB audit was a request to update our highly-qualified teacher policy, which is, which is policy GA. This is the updated requested by the Maine Department of Ed policy. The regu, the regulation sheet is attached to the back of it. I would ask that you be kind enough to grant us the first reading of policy, updated policy GA. You already have one. This is an updated one. Okay. And, how about, maybe you can finish this list, and then we can just. Okay, do the whole thing, sure. Tricia and I had a long conversation about what people need to bring to school to register their children to show that they are residents of the community of Acton, which was at one point a five double-sided.
Yeah.
Five-page double-sided document. So we have amended the policy, we have amended the regulation. It passed muster, hands down, and I would ask that you accept the revision of policy J E C A proof of residence. That's what we've got for policies this evening. Okay, so I'll ask for a motion to accept as a first reading policy JKAA, JKAR, GA, and GA, highly-qualified teacher, and J E C A.
Second. Or, I can move first.
You can, you can first it.
I'll first it. So moved.
There you go.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, that those policies listed be accepted for a first reading. And I've already done the Maya. And the Maya's already done. So all those in favor, or no?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Well, somewhat related. So policies, being a new board member, as these get approved, I put, I add them to my policy binder. I get that. Replace any old with the new.
Correct.
Monitor, right?
Yeah.
Is there a electronic version of this? Or as we do this, are, are new ones going into? Because mine looks like it was started in 1910.
Okay, well.
There is, there is a new electronic.
I think there's a mimeograph pages in that sucker.
Michael grants you, Michael grants you access to the policy section.
I think I have. So there's an electronic version?
Yes.
We have a Google Docs.
As they're getting improved.
As they're getting.
It's not going live yet.
No, that's.
It's not online to the public yet.
I was just curious as to what the state is of the expanding of technology.
Because, yeah, you were, she was, now you will be, have access to modify the documents.
I'll be able to read on my iPad?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it wasn't about, I just.
As long as you remember your password.
Any other, any other business to come before the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah.